We'll call this meeting to order of the San Marcos City Council. Today is, this is a regular meeting and today is Tuesday, May 21st of 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. Mr. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We all are current present.
All right. First off, will be our invocation provided this evening by Mike Holyfield, chaplain of the San Marcos Police Department.
If it'd be appropriate, please bow your head. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families, and the individuals that make our city of San Marcos the great place that it is. We pray for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, and our city leaders and staff. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you generously give to them wisdom, strength, and courage to skillfully govern the people in our city. May they produce creative ideas and solutions to problems. Grant them a sense of welfare and true needs of our people of San Marcos. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there may be an honest disagreement. Lastly, Lord, we ask you to give our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city leaders and staff a peace that surpasses all understanding in their lives, in their homes, and in their families. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. You would join me in our pledges of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay. Before our citizen comment, we have a celebration this evening. Tiffany Harris will tell us about the program and about all these lovely people who are here with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tiffany Harris. I'm the Community Vitality Coordinator in the Neighborhood Enhancement Department. I would like to introduce you to the university class of 2024. This year's class attended seven evening sessions featuring presenters from each of our city departments. Attendees got a behind-the-scenes look at city operations, learned about future projects and initiatives on the horizon for our city, and discovered ways to get more involved. This year's class had 30 participants compared to 20 last year. We also added presentations by the city attorney and municipal court to this year's cohort. Participants in this year's class were all very engaged and we were very pleased by the feedback we heard from them regarding their experiences. Our next class will be in spring 2025. We will begin taking applications next January, or next February, excuse me. Anyone interested in participating should contact me. Mayor, would you care to say a few words?
You bet. Congratulations to all of the graduates and thank you for taking your time to go through this program. I know that it does take time, but hey, we're a big city with a lot of things going on. So thank you for your kind attention. I also want to thank all of the staff who presented during these seven nights of university, providing that information for you. And we look forward to your future participation in city events, boards, commissions, whatever suits your fancy. Did you all read the names?
Well, we could do that, sure. I'd be happy to. So we have.
And we'll do a photo, so do you want them just come forward as you call their name?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes. So we have, well, actually, they're not all here. So I'll read the list of the names and if they are here, they can come up.
That'd be great.
So Alyssa Ramirez, Amanda Fox, Amanda Rodriguez, Adam Von Art, Barbara Saucedo, Blanca Tristan, Carolyn Herr, Chase Norris, Christiana Johnson, Clayton Rosales, Daniel Martinez Calderon, Edna Gonzalez, Eleanor Munoz, Jenna Smith, Joshua Breones, Juan Miguel Arredondo, Justin Lee Gonzalez, Liz Dobbins, Marida Hutchison, Matthew Dozier, Max Bridges, Maxfield Baker, Melanie Zamora, Nikaila Shaheen, Ron Epperson, Sean Rife, Tiffany Quibodeau, Tristan Pride, William Moore, and William Wilson.
Everybody say we didn't have a final exam.
Yay!
Thank you all, congratulations. Looking forward to what's next with you. Okay. And now, citizen comment portion of our program. The city council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. If you wish to address the council during citizen comment, there is a sign-up process. If those of you would close the door, please. Thank you. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I'll ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak when you state your name. You'll see the timer on the screen. You start in the green. When you have 20 seconds left, it goes to yellow. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. So this evening, we have signed up. And I will read the names so that y'all can kind of line up and be ready. Dan Grant, followed by Noah Brock, followed by Nasir Said, Marcia Fangemei, I'm getting close to that, Maxfield Baker. So if y'all will line up, and Dan Grant, you will be first. Is Dan Grant here? I will circle back, Noah Brock.
Good evening, council. My name's Noah Brock. I'm here to talk about AN 2403, the request from Franklin Mountain, San Marcos, to annex land for a future roadway. I spoke about this at the last council meeting, pointing out the fact that this does not benefit the city or its residents. Today, you are voting on the provision of services for this annexation request. This is item 15. I would like to point out the fact that there are not many instances in the past 10 years where a right-of-way annexation occurred without any other accompanying land annexations. There's only one instance of this in which the city did not even initiate it themselves. This instance was AN 2309 Sedona North Lovelady Lane Row Annexation, which occurred in September of last year. The developer of this project had already submitted a subdivision plan for the adjoining property, and the only reason this row annexation was separate is because the developer did not dedicate enough right-of-way in their initial annexation request. The AN 2403, which you're voting on tonight for provision of services, states that the annexation is for 7.553 acres, including adjacent right-of-way. However, the maps make it appear that this annexation is only for right-of-way. The way this is worded makes it sound like the property owner is annexing additional land outside of the right-of-way, which is kind of misleading. Is this actually true? Are they annexing land outside of the right-of-way? If not, I don't understand why the resolution is worded in that manner. Maybe city staff can answer that question. And by the way, the developer did purchase the 75-acre property on the other side of FM 1984 after the roadway easement was moved in Caldwell County. This happened on April 17th. So they now own more land and have worked to align their spine road next to existing residences. There is still no benefit to the community to annex this road at this time. This only benefits a developer who does not want to annex the rest of their property. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Said, who is joining us online. Mr. Trevino is. He's not there, I'll circle back. Then the next is Maxfield Baker, who joins us in person.
Hey. So, yeah, I took the university class. Oh, yeah, my name's Maxfield Baker. I took the university class and I gotta say, the quote that stuck with me the whole time is, "Systems rarely give you the education to overthrow them." Fundamentally, while there was a lot of great information in the packets that they provided, you know, what's very telling is that none of that information, even though I asked in advance, was just provided for everybody on the city's website. There was a concern brought forward that, oh, well, you know, you're gonna get so much from just the conversations, but a lot of the presentations were just reading off the slides. All of that is to say, the San Marcos Civics Club, still a very active group, going on our fifth meeting this month, will be meeting on Discord. Feel free to reach out to us if you're interested in joining. Our next meeting will be June 24th, and that'll be back at Tantra Coffee House, where we will actually discuss the university packet, as well as go over a lovely email that I'm gonna write to you all about things that I would recommend changing or adding, right? So for example, when the police chief gave his presentation, you know, he included how many use-of-force issues we had and problem officer, you know, issues about problem officers, but included no information about how to report an officer for abusing their power, right? Things like that should be in this university class. Things like, how much money does our city manager and other city appointees make? That should be part of those discussions, right? The contact information for city council members, also just not in there, right? Like all cellphone numbers that the city pays for through taxes, right? So, you know, the university class is really kind of a good foundation. I do encourage everybody to take part in it. It really is a valuable way to get right in front of the staff members that are doing a lot of things for our city. But in some instances, it revealed some glaring disconnects. Forgive the pun in advance, when it comes to things like when we met with water. And Mr. Tyler Hjorth was kind of caught off guard that people's utilities were being cut off kind of drastically, which is something that I know many of you care about here and that we've had discussions at the dais about making sure people aren't cut off, especially as we head into another hot summer. So, you know, all of that is to say, we all do better when we communicate openly and effectively. And as somebody who has sat up there and now sits on the other side, I don't feel like I receive healthy communication from my city council members, who, again, I've written y'all a lot of emails. Matthew Mendoza, I'm still waiting for responses from you. Jude Prather, still waiting for responses from you. City staff, still waiting on responses, right? So, you know, the civics club is here to help bridge those conversations, work together to make these resources y'all are providing more effective and actually helpful to the community. I hope you meet us in sincere interest to work together on those things. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eli Doyle, who joins us online. Following Eli will be Katie Steele, Mackenzie Peterson, Yancy Aravalo. I believe Eli is on.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Eli. I'm here to speak to the council. After last city council meeting where there was roughly two and a half hours of citizens' comment, the vast majority of which was in favor of the ceasefire resolution and in solidarity for Malachi Williams's family and their demands of you, I want to reiterate that we aren't going anywhere. The outrage is just gonna get more and more intense the longer that it takes for us to be able to have an open and honest discussion about the ceasefire resolution at the city council level. As of the May 19th, at least 35,647 people have been killed from Israeli attacks in Gaza and at least 79,852 have been wounded. I mean, it's like we can keep repeating these statistics and the numbers can keep getting higher. Scott speaks about how many children per square mile Rafa is continuing to have and gives you visuals about what that looks like from city council to the Walmart on Hopkins. We keep imploring you with these facts about how horrible genocide is. And at a certain point, I wanna know if it feels ridiculous to y'all that we have not had a second to have this, to have the ceasefire resolution put forward for discussion. How, how many things, how many horrible things do we have to bring up in order, in order for an open and honest discussion to be able to be had with the community and in order for y'all to go on record and say how you would vote, right? We elected you. You are here to represent us. At the very least, you can give us your actual vote on record for or against the ceasefire resolution. I'd like to just take my remaining time to speak in support of Malachi Williams's family. They laid to rest Malachi a couple of days ago and y'all have made no movement whatsoever on any of the demands that they asked of you two weeks ago about releasing the badge number and name of the officers involved, about removing them from duty until things have been decided. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Steele, followed by Mackenzie Peterson and Yancy Aravalo.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Be sure to state your name.
Okay, my name is Katie Steele. And I'm here today to advocate for a ceasefire resolution to my elected officials. Y'all are the leaders of our community who I imagine desire to affect positive change in the world, or else y'all wouldn't be sitting in this room right now. I'm sure some people are wondering why folks are here advocating for action on a ceasefire all the way in Palestine. It's so far away, how does this affect me or my community? A ceasefire resolution would advocate for community awareness of this crucial humanitarian issue that our tax dollars are funding. It would garner a growing support nationwide with other cities to put pressure on our elected officials further up the chain to stop the genocide. How hopeless and dystopian to sit back and do nothing while we see unimaginable cruelties inflicted on the Palestinians every day. What if you were in Gaza? What if those were your kids in the rubble? I'm outraged that my taxes go to kill children abroad to make a buck and endanger Jewish, Arab, and Muslims in the process. Zionism makes communities less safe and threatens our right to free speech. Why do 3.8 billion American tax dollars go to Israel every year? Why do nearly 300 million Texans' tax dollars go to Israel every year? An estimated $940,000 go from San Marcos alone to Israel. That is our hard-earned money going to war crimes that should instead be invested in our communities. I'm sure there's fear of being portrayed as anti-Semitic, but that is just falling prey to Zionist propaganda that is so deeply entrenched in American economics and politics. Zionism in and of itself is anti-Semitic. To tie thousands-year-old religion and its people to a 120-year-old colonial project predicated on white supremacy, responsible for ethnic cleansing, genocide, stealing land and resources, settler violence, apartheid torture, and thousands upon thousands upon thousands of murdered innocent civilians, many of which are children, is in itself anti-Semitic. Leaders who supported the civil rights movement, desegregation, and women's suffrage faced criticism, but as leaders, our task to you is to represent your constituents. And your constituents wish to do whatever we can to stop the genocide in Palestine as well as resist Islamophobia, anti-Arab sentiment, and cultural, or sorry, and actual anti-Semitism in our community. And we need y'all to help do that. If nothing else, for those who still believe this started on October 7th, please research the Nakba of 1948, the Balfour Declaration, and the nonviolent Palestinian resistance. Look up David Ben-Gurion, the father of Zionism's demands to violently occupy Palestine. Research the Ben-Gurion Canal. Be willing to challenge your acceptance of American imperialist propaganda and ask yourself why the powers that be are trying so hard to threaten those who want peace. It's incumbent upon us as Americans to think globally and act locally. And y'all have the opportunity to be a part of the catalyst for change and I hope you take it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mackenzie Peterson.
My name is Mackenzie Peterson. I am here once again as a citizen of Texas and as a resident of San Marcos to plead with my local government, as well as my neighbors have before, that you represent the interests of your constituents. Growing up, I was taught in my school in history classes by my government about genocides around the world. And I was taught that if I ever saw something happening like that again, I should not repeat the mistakes of my ancestors, that I should speak up and stand against it. And yet, when I do, I am told to sit down and remain silent. In fact, I am told by my own governor that speaking about it at all is anti-Semitic, which I find ridiculous considering I am Jewish on my mother's side. It is no secret that there are members of the council here today who have financial interests connected to the apartheid state of Israel, though I also recognize that being citizens of the United States yourselves, you have a right to participate in the free market. However, the idea that your own business ventures take precedence over the demands of your constituents to this extent greatly disturbs me. It leads me to believe that on a larger scale, the federal government is very much doing the same. You have given me no reason to believe that this is not the case. I would like to have faith that my local democracy is concerned with the will, concerned with the will of the people, but foreign issues like the genocide of Palestinians have continuously been written off as a non-municipal issue. Many of my family and friends are Palestinian and are also citizens of the United States and are greatly affected by where our tax dollars go, where their tax dollars go. They do not trust you as their representatives and I cannot blame them. After seeing the way you handled the murder of my fellow San Martians, Malachi Williams, I don't trust you either. I also fail to understand how being asked to posture is such a difficult task for you. What will the city of San Marcos lose by condemning war crimes or having a discussion about a ceasefire resolution against these war crimes? Or is this a matter of genocide denial, which your silence is obviously complicit in? This only further sows unrest and suspicion within the body of your constituents. My requests are as follows. Please return discussion of a ceasefire resolution back to the agenda. Please release the name of the officer responsible for Malachi Williams's death, as well as the associated body cam footage to his family, if that footage even exists, which at this point, I'm starting to suspect that the body cam may have never been on in the first place. If these simple requests can be met, I might vote for you in the next election. What the city of San Marcos stands for is your choice. I cannot say that it is the choice of the people, because it obviously is not.
Our next speaker is Yancy Aravalo. And following will be Rodrigo Amaya, Amanda Rodriguez, and William Wilson.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Yancy Aravalo. I'm here in support of a ceasefire resolution and in support of Malachi Williams and his family. I'm tired of this, y'all. I don't wanna be here today. I have a headache, but I'm still here, showing up for the people of Palestine, trying to get a second for the ceasefire resolution to be put up for discussion. It's so simple, yet y'all are making it so difficult and it's so, so frustrating. I think about the people of Palestine every day. I was eating mushroom soup yesterday and I thought, how privileged I am to be eating every day. Sometimes, yes, I struggle to, you know, find food, but at least I eat. I can't say that for the people of Palestine. I'm gonna read some quotes, cuz I don't really have anything prepared for today. "There is no way besides transferring their Arabs from here to the neighboring countries, and to transfer all of them, save perhaps for the Arabs of Bethlehem, Nazareth, and Old Jerusalem. Not one village must be left, not one tribe. And only after this transfer will the country be able to absorb millions of our brothers and the Jewish problem will cease to exist. There is no other solution." This is a quote in 1940 by Joseph White's, former director of the Land and Forestation Department, the Jewish National Fund. Same person. "It must be clear that there is no room for both people in this country. No development brings us closer to our aim to be an independent people in this small country. If the Arabs leave the country, it will be broad and wide open for us. And if the Arabs stay, the country will remain narrow and miserable. The only solution is Arabs Israel, a Jewish state without Arabs. We must expel the Arabs and take their places. And if we have to use force to guarantee our own right to settle in those places, then we have force at our disposal." 1937. "During the assault, we must be ready to strike the decisive blow. That is, either to destroy the towns or expel its inhabitants so our people can replace them." 1948. David Ben-Gurion, first prime minister of Israel. This has been planned for generations. And the fact that we can't even have a simple discussion on the agenda is ridiculous.
Our next speaker is Rodrigo Amaya.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Frustrating, misleading, disconnects, no trust. Some of y'all are accused of having ties to what's happening in Palestine. How is this acceptable, council? Do y'all care about what the constituents say? You should. I'm curious. We had a former public safety director, Chase Stapp, that position was created for him after he left the Chiva Police's office. And I'm just wondering, with him and all his experience, what did he leave behind that we can say benefited San Marcos? You know, here we are with this officer-involved shooting. Back to square one, no transparency. I know there's a guy there that gets paid a lot of money with the police department. He's been there for some years. One of the things he talks about is how he travels the United States looking for the best candidates to be police officers here in San Marcos. I wanna see that skill. I wanna see those candidates that are above average. He claims we get the best. Why don't y'all release the video of the shooting? Why all this, all these efforts to cover this up? Shouldn't be this hard. The family, the community should not have to come up here repeatedly, repeatedly, talk about y'all not doing and y'all not forcing those in positions to do what needs to be done. Why not? Why do y'all continue to add insult to injury? You know, there's been all kinds of gatherings and meetings and discussions, news coverage, and same thing. I've been here since 1987. There's been a lot of my friends that have died under suspicious circumstances. And it's always been the same thing. You know, it's their cover-ups. Me, what I'm trying to contribute to this situation here is I'm trying to reach out to the Department of Justice so they can come up here. One of the former city managers of Austin, Mr. Ott, once called the Department of Justice to come check the operating procedures of the police department. And I'm very glad that he did that. That's the kind of leadership we need. That's the kind of leadership this community deserves. Why ain't y'all know anything about it? You know, so just, you know, take that tonight. I hope it makes a change, cuz, you know, I'm very glad everybody's out here pushing for the same thing, transparency. You guys need to step up and make it happen. Thank you.
Amanda Rodriguez is next, followed by William Wilson.
Amanda Rodriguez. I'm really happy. One of my good friends mentioned how exhausted we are. I'm sure that maybe some of y'all don't agree with what I have to say every time I come up here and may enjoy that exhaustion. But what, this is the fifth or sixth time in a row? in a row that I've come up here and quite literally begged each of you to do what you could and just second, as it's already been mentioned? Most of y'all can't even give us eye contact. I'm like genuinely, what is there to say? Normally, I have a lot of words. I don't know. It's frustrating. You got to hear about kids getting sniped to death. And for those of you who are like military people, you know how much intent it is to snipe somebody to death. And still, we have to beg. I get nothing out of this. Instead, you know what I got to deal with from people in this community? I got to deal with them threatening to fire me because I come up here and beg y'all to bring a resolution, and they try to fire me. That's what we get. That's what we deal with. Simply, we get nothing out of it. I'd like to go home. I'd like to rest, but I can't because I am sick of my city. I have lived here all my life, and I'm so embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. How callous. How disgusting. This isn't even something we should be begging you. You should be doing it yourself and us come and support you. We brought people, one of arguably, I've been organizing in this town for a little bit. In the last showing we had, we had people of all professions come over here and speak because they're all disgusted. So I don't have a ton of words for y'all. I'm just very disappointed. And the Malachi Williams issue, just my gosh. We talk all the time. I've heard many of y'all say, you know, improving police relations and getting us to trust these police and seeing them as something for other than what they are. And I did. Mr. Mobley, who passed away, oh, man, he's a good guy. I'll tell you that. But there's few and far between anymore. And how y'all are running this department and the dude y'all got doing it, it's kind of productive to what y'all are trying to do. Let's just say that. So that's all I got to say.
William Wilson.
Hello. My name is William Wilson, Mayor, City Council. Two things, just real quick. I would like to ask every member of the council, if San Marcos PD doesn't want to release the tapes, that's fine, but I would ask that y'all make sure that they don't delete this body cam footage, if it really does exist. If the district attorney or whoever needs it in the future, I think it's a right call to at least preserve the footage. Thank you. And secondly, on agenda item number five, Mark Gleason specifically, I'd like to see you recuse yourself because you have received donations from San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association. Don't really think that's ethical, but your choice, I suppose. Thank you.
Is Dan Grant here? We had him on first. Okay. And Mr. Trevino, is there anyone online that... Okay. All righty. Then we will go to item one.
Receive a presentation from staff and consider the proposed new boundary and renaming of the Dunbar and Heritage Neighborhood Area Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. We have a map that was in your packet that will be placed on the screen. Late last year, the Planning and Zoning Commission postponed action on the Dunbar and Heritage Area Plan and formed a committee. The committee made a recommendation to the city council, which included splitting the plan and focusing more outreach on the Dunbar neighborhood. City Council provided direction that the Planning and Zoning Commission Committee redraw the area plan boundaries, and we're seeking direction on that this evening. The map on the screen indicates the new boundaries, which the committee generally put all of the homes which face San Antonio Street in the Heritage Area Plan and all of the homes that face MLK in the Dunbar Area Plan. And this proposal received unanimous approval, approval recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission in April. If approved by council this evening, staff will work to separate the plans and create outreach strategies. I just want to note that this plan will now be fully staff-driven. The consultant won't be part of this process anymore. We did expend our budget for this area plan, creating that initial draft, so the community can look forward to seeing a lot of Planning and Development Services staff out in their neighborhoods as we hold outreach for these plans, as well as the Historic Preservation Plan. And just a quick nugget, we have started that process, so the Historic Preservation Plan is underway. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. And so this, it's noted as a discussion, but y'all are looking for a direction, I do believe. And so, Mr. Gary, do we need a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am, and I do have on there, consider, so y'all can consider it and my action if they need that specific.
Yes, direction or action.
And, and the, and it's to basically to approve this map and the boundaries?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
Uh, motion.
Or to consider? How would I phrase that?
To approve.
To approve, then. Yes, ma'am. Motion to approve.
Mr. Gleason, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Counsel, discussion. I thank the committee for their work. Thank staff for their work. I like it, so I'm going to vote for it. Anybody else? Anything to say? Not? Mr. Trevino? Will, are we push-button voting tonight?
No, not today. Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, Mary Houston?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
And Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. The two absent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Counsel, next is our consent agenda, and I will be pulling items nine, 10, 11, and 15. So I would be looking for a motion to approve items two through eight and 12 through 14, unless someone has something they would like to pull, which is certainly, okay.
Motion to approve two through eight, and then you said?
Twelve and 14.
Twelve and 14.
Twelve through 14.
Twelve through 14. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Mr. Mendoza. That was for approval. Mr. Trevino, we will vote on two through eight and 12 through 14.
Ms. Garza, Mary Houston?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater? And Mr. Scott, the motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and as our usual practice, we will do the public hearings next, and then we will come back to the consent agenda. Public hearing number one, also known as item 16. Ms. Trevino.
Hold a public hearing and consider an appeal by Hayden Dooley and the Lively Lane Condominium Community, Inc., of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on April 19, 2024, to approve a conditional use permit, which allows a warehouse and storage use for Elliott Electric Supply CUP-24-11 located at 1904 Dutton Drive.
Ms. Hernandez.
Mayor, Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is a little over one acre and is located at the corner of Dutton Drive and Dutton Drive. Next slide. This is behind the Sync Apartments near the Hays County Government Center. There are townhomes across the street, and residents of the townhomes have appealed the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission to allow a warehouse expansion for Elliott Electric, which is an existing electric supply and warehouse business. Next slide. The property is owned general commercial, and a conditional use permit is required for the proposed expansion of the warehouse use. Next slide. The site plan shows the expansion of the building to the north with an adjacent outdoor storage area. Next slide. To mitigate the impacts of the new outdoor storage area, staff recommended, and Planning and Zoning Commission approved, a condition that a six-foot-tall, solid fence or wall be installed and the existing barbed-wire fence be removed. The fence would be located generally along the yellow line on the screen, and it would be inside the grass whale, so drainage would not be affected. The appeal letter included in your packet, and to reference, there was a page of that missing, so we provided that to the commission today. The neighbors who live across Dutton in front of the business hear noises from vehicles and people working at the business late at night or early in the morning, and they've proposed a condition which would require employees to be quiet and respectful of their neighbors, compliance with the noise ordinance, and limiting the hours of trash pickup. The condition that's proposed by the applicant is a little bit difficult to enforce. One is trying to figure out what business being conducted is essential business, is one of their requests, and the definition of respectful of the neighbors is kind of hard to define, so we feel that the enforcement of that would be difficult. Compliance with the noise ordinance, that ordinance is actually in our code, so that applies to all businesses, and there's a process for complaints for noise that could be followed. And for limiting the hours of trash pickup, the Elliott Electric could ask their trash pickup to come during certain hours of the day, but it would be up to that provider, whoever they have as their trash provider, to come and pick up that trash during those times. So we feel that that might be a little bit difficult to enforce as well. So staff is maintaining the recommendation that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is approval with a six-foot fence or wall. And that will conclude my presentation.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. I don't believe anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? If you'll approach the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Simpson. I live at 1905 Dutton Drive, San Marcos, Texas. I'm here this evening as both a resident, as well as a representative of the Lively Lane condo association that filed the joint appeal to Elliott Electric CUP for an expansion of their existing use. We support Elliott Electric's desire to expand and improve their property, but as adjacent neighbors, we are concerned that an expansion of their operations, which are currently a non-conforming conditional use of the property, would increase the existing noise issues that are already being generated in the very late hours of the night on-site. Thus, we are requesting that the CUP approval be amended to also include the addition of compliance with the city's existing local noise ordinance after the business closes to the public. To clarify what Ms. Hernandez just said, we have been told that they are not required to currently comply with the local noise ordinance. When we have spoken to staff before, they said that that did not apply to this property, so that is why we are asking to add this to the CUP. The, let's see. On April 9, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not consider the criteria for approval noted in section 2.8.3.4. A of the LDC and their deliberations, and did not add noise restrictions based solely on who was there first. However, who was there first, we feel is irrelevant to an application to expand a non-conforming conditional use, which requires that the current composition of the neighborhood be considered, not the composition of the neighborhood nearly 30 years ago. We're also concerned that the detailed feedback we provided to staff well before this meeting date with planning and zoning was not provided to the commission until the day of the meeting, limiting their ability to adequately consider this aspect of the case. For nearly 15 years, Purgatory Creek Apartments have had longtime residents and management that have confirmed ongoing issues with nighttime noise generated by the business. Our community has 11 and soon-to-be 28 homes across the street from the subject property. We believe all our uses can coexist without conflict. We do not wish to disrupt Elliott's ability to operate a successful business. We're simply requesting that late-night operations be conducted respectfully, particularly as they expand their use. In our appeal letter, we touch upon some of the middle-of-the-night disturbances, much of which could be avoided, such as loud music, shouting, dropping of materials on or directly next to the public right-of-way in their driveway. Their dumpsters are also regularly serviced before 6:00 a.m., whereas all other businesses and residences in the area are regularly served during daytime hours. We have met with and are in touch with the branch manager about the noise issues and potential solutions for mitigation. We appreciate very much their willingness to communicate with us on these issues and are generally sympathetic to their need to conduct business within their current corporate regional model. That being said, we continue to request that the CUP be amended to include noise restrictions, as businesses and their representatives may change in the future. Approving an expansion of conditional use without requiring a condition related to late-night noise would be providing a new expanded entitlement to a business without providing your citizens any recourse to make reasonable complaints about very late-night noises. We have provided some suggested language, which was provided to you there, and it primarily points to the local noise nuisance ordinance, that it be applied to the property and any businesses that operate on it. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If you'll approach the podium, we do need your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Hannah Farmer. I live at 101A Lively Lane in the Lively Lane Townhomes across from Elliott Electric, and I have recently also observed work continue on past 9:00 p.m. and sometimes after midnight. It's a lot of noise from the forklifts, deliveries, and conversations between workers that get loud, even in my unit, which is currently the furthest from the Dutton Drive. So I certainly understand Hayden Dooley's concern in his letter. He's closest. I'm sure it's really loud for him. So I would like to reiterate Sarah's comments about, you know, supporting our local business and coexisting. Of course, we knew we were moving into a new home across from some businesses, but I did not expect there to be middle-of-the-night, you know, forklift deliveries, and I think it's reasonable to request that this be in writing as part of this new permit. I love for things to be in writing. I'm a librarian, and certainly the current management has been very amenable, but I do worry that with the expansion of the business, that could be an expansion of some of the lengthy deliveries. And so I think it's smart to just plan for it now and have it in writing. Thank you for your time.
Any other speakers to speak for or against or about this item? Approach the podium. Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I await a motion from the council. And Ms. Hernandez, would you be, come explain to us so that we can be very clear about what this motion would be?
Sure. So, motion would be to uphold or approve the Planning Commission recommendation. Nope, I'm going to say that backwards. Maybe Sam should jump in. It's a, it's an appeal request, so it's whether or not you want to approve the appeal and make a change or not approve the appeal. But yeah, I'll let Sam jump in on that one.
Right, and just to elaborate a little bit and put some of this wording in the packet, but you have the option to reverse, uphold, or maybe affirm, or modify the decision of the, the commission. And I know if there is a motion to modify or something, then you, you could take it up in a series of amendments. If it's simply to reverse or to affirm, it could be a straight-up motion to do that. But a modification, and any of those, just make a basic motion, then any amendments could come after.
Can we, could we start with affirm and then work through amendments to make changes, if that's where we want to go? I'm trying to figure out, what motion do I need to get this on the table so we can start talking about it?
Yes.
I need, I need a simple answer on that.
That, that would be fine, a motion to affirm, and then see where it goes.
Okay. So...
I'll give the motion to affirm for discussion.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that, and I'm also susceptible to some of these amendments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for that, too. But I've got a couple of questions first for Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, I, I looked and looked and looked for the section of the code that's referenced in Ms. Simpson's letter. I did not find exactly that. I found close to it. So if someone can tell me exactly what that section is or what page on the code or something, would, would be helpful.
The reference to the noise that was offered by Ms. Simpson is in chapter 34 of the city's Code of Ordinances.
I went there.
Deals with noise from vehicles, excessive noise violations. The noise ordinance that we would actually enforce would be in the Development Code, section 7421.
Okay.
Where we limit the decibel levels between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. to 75, and there's a process in there for a police officer taking a noise measurement device, checking the decibels. There are some exceptions in there, but, but that is what would be applicable in the instance of a business making noise or excessive noise when they're not supposed to.
Okay. Would you give me the hours again, please, ma'am?
10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., 75 decibels.
Is the max?
Mm-hmm.
How loud is that? Like, a lullaby loud or forklift loud?
You know, we've looked it up before. Let me... 75, vacuum cleaner or average radio.
Okay. And does this already apply to this business in this location?
It applies citywide. And the 85 that's allowed during the day, heavy traffic, power lawnmower. Those are some examples that are given.
I thought we had a lawnmower in the first one.
Vacuum cleaner.
I thought you said mower after that, okay.
Lawnmower is the next level up.
Got it. How do we normally, how are those, these enforced?
Typically...
Anywhere at any time?
Typically, it's a complaint for a bar or restaurant that we get noise, and someone would have to call the police department. They have specific decibel readers that are referenced in the ordinance that they would take out and do measurements from points that are listed in the ordinance. So, property lines, they can go onto a private property owner's land and take the decibel reading with their permission.
Right.
That type of thing. But it's at the property line. So, in this instance, it would be on the other side of Dutton, where the reading would be taken, not necessarily where the residents are living. We would take the reading closer than their homes.
Okay. Ms. Simpson, may I ask you a few questions? Would you come to the podium? I want to make sure I understand what your request was, because I did try to find that, and I couldn't find that section number. I came close.
So, we were referencing, when we were looking in the code, just at the local noise ordinances, we were able to find that chapter 34, section 2.8.3.4.A. I don't have it printed out in front of me, but it refers to like loud music and kind of general, it's what usually applies to residential. Staff did not relate to us anything about this other noise part of the code, so we did not find that whenever we were looking for it. Oh, you know what? Sorry. The section, I'm giving you the section of the LDC in terms of the planning and zoning. So, this is chapter 34, article 3, division 3. I don't know if I said that correctly. So, sorry, that was incorrect on the 2.8.3.4. But subchapter A, 34, article 3, division 3, and that's the noise nuisance ordinance that speaks mostly to loud music and kind of loud conversations, and that, what we were experiencing, we thought that was the closest thing we could point to in the code that would be enforceable.
Okay. Thank you. So, now I need Ms. Hernandez to talk about those two, and I'm trying to find this in the code. So, yes, in between.
And I'll tell you, I'm not extremely familiar with the chapter 34 noise ordinance. That is typically enforced by our code compliance. I'm just trying to look over it and see if there's anything that stands out. I don't know if Mr. Carr is listening, if he's more familiar with this particular ordinance, but I think that just by glancing through chapter 34, the Development Code appears to have more teeth and regulations in that it gives more timeframes, it gives actual decibels, and it actually includes a process for someone to go out and do that meter reading, where to do it from.
That's correct.
Okay. And Mr. Carr's agreeing that the Development Code noise ordinance is actually more effective than chapter 34.
Okay. But that applies everywhere it would apply to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Carr, did you have anything to add, or is that good?
The only thing I might add, because I'm much familiar with this property, are there forklifts involved?
That's what I'm hearing.
Then, there should be the requirement to have, it's called a white noise backup, to that annoying beep. It's new technology, and if you've ever seen the new electric Amazon trucks, that's what they got. It kind of, you can hear it right behind, and it kind of, it's a weird sound, but you can't hear it to the side, and it doesn't echo that normal beep, beep, beep can echo for, you know, miles. So, that's just a recommendation I would make.
Well, okay, then.
White noise. Doesn't cost you.
But that is for the forklift. I'm looking to see what is in the business that we can ask be changed, and what would be external, like, for example, trucks that are delivering that the business would not have control over. That's what I'm... So, was that about the forklifts that the white noise is available on?
Correct. I've used that a few businesses that were close to residential, and it really made a difference. You're right, you can't do the vehicles that are coming in, but that forklift that's working all hours and back and forth, that is usually what drives people nuts, one of the things.
Right. Council, anyone have any? I've got some more things, but I need to let you all jump in if you've...
Exactly.
Got it, okay. I'm always happy to see a business expand and grow. That's always great. But if you've got people living nearby, and you want to expand further, I realize the business was there first, and now we've got people living there, but now they're asking for something special, to be able to do more. And so, now I think we need to look at what's there. And the letter that we have about the noise that's been between 11 and 4 for apparently a while, that's concerning to me. Is there anyone from the business here who would like to speak? If you would address these, the noise that it appears has been going between 11 and 4, if you give your name, please?
Adam Parker.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm the branch manager. We have deliveries that come at night, just like grocery stores do, like a Walmart or HEB. And so, we get deliveries that are replenishments from the day before. So, we do get a truck from San Antonio and from Austin, and they meet there. Typically, they should only be there maybe 30 minutes. I'm not hearing that that's, sometimes that's maybe not happening. I don't know, but typically, that's what they are. So, I reached out to both San Antonio and Austin, the drivers, the specific drivers and their managers, about the loud music conversations.
Yes, some of this is controllable.
Yeah, 100%. Yeah, and we've already started some of those conversations already, and changed some things already. So, as far as the forklift, I just found out about that noise-canceling backup beep thing. So, I'll definitely look into that for sure. That would be helpful. But the evening, the evening work hours are, they're not, we're not there. There's just delivery drivers that drop off, and then deliver to the store, and then they leave. So, we don't have employees there that are like working all night long. They're just, they're there to...
But you do have employees there that are receiving the shipments, correct?
Not really. No, they just drop the material off. We receive the material in the morning.
They drop it off unsecured?
They have keys to the building, so they go in and they drop the material off, and then they leave. So, I don't have...
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they work for Elliott. The delivery drivers work for Elliott, and then they drop the material off.
So, you all may not know what they're doing when they're there, because you all aren't there.
Very true.
And it's hard to control things if you're not there.
100%, yeah. Which is, and I reached out to both the managers for Austin and San Antonio, and the drivers, specific drivers, just letting them know that we do have residents across the street that were complaining about loud noises. And so, I got assurances from both that they would, you know, they would correct behavior if stuff happened. And so, the residents across the street have my personal cellphone, so that if there is any complaints, they can call me directly, and I can reach out to find out what happened. We do have a trash service that comes and services. We've asked them at least two or three times to not deliver before, I want to say, we told them not early, like before 7:00. They seem to not understand what I'm asking, because they keep delivering, I think it was at 5:30 or you said, so that's waste management. I don't really know what to do about that. They're not...
Do you have a contract with them?
Yes, but it's through a broker, through our corporate office. So, they have a broker that, you know, that they do these deals with local waste management companies and stuff like that. But I can reach out to them and call them and tell them not to deliver, but I don't, yeah.
Well, if there's a contract, it seems like that could be put in the contract, and then they would need to abide by the contract.
Yeah.
I think just asking a driver, who may not always be the driver, may not be as effective as one would hope.
Yep, understood.
I got a question. So, the Elliott drivers have access to your guys' forklift when they get there?
Correct.
Or is this forklift they're bringing?
No, it's the one that we have there at the shop.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we did do modifications to the, yes, we would.
That would solve one problem.
We'd be able to do that. The only other thing would be the vehicles that they show up in, you know, that would be... I would like to say that if we do get the expansion, the deliveries would be further away from the residents, and so that would, whether we get their expansion or not, we're still going to have deliveries. It doesn't increase the deliveries. I know it seemed like it, but I think it would help because of the deliveries. I could tell them to make the deliveries further, further away. And so, for whatever that means.
Mr. Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if we add these modifications or restrictions, will this hinder your business at all?
No. The ones to the vehicle, to the vehicle, to the forklifts...
Well, just the overnight modifications we want to make as far as sound restriction, things like that, that's not going to affect your business at all.
Oh, no. No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because these sound restrictions are in place now. So, it's just abiding by what our laws are all the time. Ms. Prather, do you have anything?
Question.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Your forklift, are they gas, or are they battery-driven?
They're gas-powered, yeah.
They're gas-powered, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, those ones you have, those propane tank in the back?
Yes, sir. Yep, in the back, yep.
Thank you.
They're not very loud, it's just the beeping that's loud.
It's the beeping that's the loudest part, yes, sir.
The beeping is the piercing part.
100%, yes.
Safety.
Yeah.
And I just found out about the noise-canceling stuff, so I'll definitely look into that tomorrow.
Might be nice to have during the day, too.
It would, it would be, yeah, I agree with that, yes.
Okay, so, Ms. Hernandez, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that what some of the residents are asking for is actually in effect?
Yes, the noise ordinance.
So, adding this to the conditional, conditional use permit?
Yes.
Conditional use permit would not have any effect?
No. I mean, if we wanted to add it for belt and suspenders, so it's on the certificate, of course, that's an option.
Well, what that does is it lets the people at the business know, is this one of those CUPs that has to be posted, like an alcohol permit? If not, can we add that to the permit to say it needs to be posted?
Yes, ma'am, we could add that to the permit. It's not currently. Typically, for these long-term uses, we don't ask for them to be posted, but absolutely could.
Mayor, I'm going to make an amendment that we require noise-canceling backup for the forklift.
And the note I took from Mr. Carr was white noise backup, so...
I said, yeah, noise cancel, white noise, however you want to describe it.
He said noise-canceling for the forklift would...
Same thing, okay, same thing.
Okay. Okay, I'll see if you get a second. We'll work on that one first.
I will second that amendment.
All right, we have a second from Mr. Mendoza to the motion from Mr. Gleason to add a requirement that there be a noise-canceling gizmo...
Noise-canceling backup technology.
Sounds to the forklift.
Yes, noise...
The forklifts at the business.
Noise-canceling backup technology added to forklifts.
We can go with that.
Installed on, installed on forklifts.
Okay.
And I'm looking these up, and it's like $30 to $100, so it's...
That was where I wanted to go next. Is this a $3,000, $10,000 something or other, or is it something that's...
Something like a problem.
Okay.
Mr. Carr said about $90.
Not a showstopper, I would hope. Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Prather. So, Ms. Trevino, let's vote on this amendment.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, and Ms. Garza, the motion passes 5 to 0 with two absent.
Okay. What I would like to do, and I will need Mr. Gary's help, what I would like to do is to include the, and I've lost it, 74...
21.
7421 text to the conditions, noting that this is in existence, but putting it on here just so everybody knows. And then also, a condition that this conditional use permit be posted...
In the same area and manner as the certificate of occupancy.
What I'm looking for is something to make sure it's where employees will see it, where you've got somebody who's managing the business for a particular period of time, so they can easily get to it. I don't know if the break room's a better place, I don't know where your certificate of occupancy is posted. I want to make sure it's a place where people will see it and can reference it. So, what would be the best place?
In the front, in the front of, and we have a counter area, and it's visible for everybody to see. I don't know.
He said in the front, near the counter, where everybody can see.
I want to make sure it's where the employees are going to see it. Okay.
Well, and I had a comment on that. It's not even necessarily his employees, it's the delivery people. Probably don't walk through that area, they probably can see it more than their employees.
And they're not going to see the certificate of occupancy either. Well, tell you what, I think it could be posted in multiple places. We won't limit you to one, but you know where we're going.
That's what I was getting, I think, nice, big, bold sign right at the entrance for the delivery driver.
Yeah, not the little one, but the signage from this. Mr. Gary?
The word that comes to mind for me is conspicuous.
Conspicuous locations.
So, yes, it has to be...
Conspicuous, conspicuous locations, plural. So, that would be my motion, is that we include that text, and that this be posted in conspicuous locations.
That works for me.
All right. I would appreciate a second from someone?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
And I have, when we get done with this, I have a question, too, for Sam.
We'll come back. Anything else on this amendment?
May I ask for clarification?
You betcha.
On the noise. Section 7421 noise, do you want it to state that between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m., sound levels are limited to 75 decibels, to be clear that those are the hours? Or do you just want a reference to the section number?
I think taking the applicable content of that item, and if wording it in a way that's more user-friendly, is fine by me. And you know, normally, I want to know exactly what the wording is, but I'm going to go with this one. Are you okay with that, Mr. Gleason, my second?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Gary, are you good with that?
I think if you understand what should be printed...
The other option we have is to table this for a little bit, go do some other things, let Ms. Hernandez work on it, and come back. And Ms. Hernandez, would you like to do that?
I have section 7421 noise, which limits sound on the property between 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. to 75 decibels, shall apply on this premises, and the permit shall be posted in conspicuous locations.
What she just said.
And also, I was thinking about the conspicuous, if you want it to be clarified, I think you could make it conspicuous to employees, contractors, and delivery, you know, delivery workers, something along that line, so that it's also in the...
And those who make deliveries.
Right, those folks aren't going to the front desk necessarily, they're in the back. So, that might be an option, just to make it clear.
Permit shall be posted in locations conspicuous to employees and those who make deliveries.
Mr. Gleason?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one?
Ms. Trevino, let's vote on this amendment.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza, and Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Back to the main motion, as amended, Mr. Gleason.
And that was my question, too, on the main motion. We had a motion to approve the appeal, and we can amend it this direct, like, this is[1763.88] this is always the yes and no, and no is yes, right?
You're, you're still good.
That's, that's where I'm wondering, is did we just kind of undo things?
No, not really, because, again, you're allowed to modify the decision. So what I'm hearing tonight, you're not, uh, asking to either rescind or reverse the granting of the CUP. You're adding conditions to your, you're affirming it with conditions is what you're really doing.
Thank you.
Which is the same as, which is the same as modify, which is the term used in the code.
Okay, voting yes.
So if you vote yes, you're letting them have the CUP with your added conditions.
I just didn't want somebody to come back to us and say we started that out on the wrong.
That's what I was worried about. Okay.
You're right on target.
I, I got one question. Uh, let's say that some neighbors decide to complain. Does a complaint drive them back over here, several complaints, or does it have to be done by the code enforcement, enforcement office?
Well, we have a process for revocation of CUPs, right? And it would have to follow that process, and I think it's, and you probably know more of the details of that amendment, but it's, it doesn't have to be the police. It can be complaint-driven, but it has to be verified.
Okay.
And, and established so that you have a basis for a revocation proceeding. So it'd have to have some verification from city staff.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
And we have the ability to issue citations as well if there are noise complaints.
Um, and I, I thank you, Mr. Parker, for making your phone number, that's your personal number, or a number that you will, if it rings at two AM, you'll hear it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, I thank you for making that available to the neighbors, because I hope that that's the first, um, call. And will probably be the most, more effective, especially on an immediate. Okay, are y'all okay? All right. Uh, anything else?
I don't think so.
If not, we're ready to vote on the item as amended twice.
Okay, Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
I'm staying.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero with one absent.
Okay, so I hope we have come to a resolution that works for everyone, and thank you. Item seventeen, Ms. Venio.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety R, providing no objection to the submission of an application for low-income housing tax credits to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the proposed Blanco Basin multifamily housing project located to the northeast of the intersection between East McCarty Lane and the Union Pacific Railroad, approving findings related to the application imposing conditions for such non-objection and declare an effective date and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety R.
Ms. Hernandez.
Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. The subject property is just under nine acres with frontage on McCarty Lane. It's directly adjacent to CN Point Apartments in the railroad tracks. The applicant is proposing an age-restricted low-income housing tax credit or light seat development. Next slide. The site plan and unit mix are shown here, and all units will serve those making sixty percent or less of the area median income, AMI, and the units will be one and two bedrooms. Next slide. The property is zone character District Five, and it's located in a medium intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. The property is located in the Edwards Aquifer Transition Zone and is accessed by McCarty Lane. Next slide. The Affordable Housing Policy Criteria includes considering distance to services, and this map shows the property is within a half a mile of medical services target, which sells groceries and private schools. Next slide. The next few slides detail the criteria in the Affordable Housing Policy. Criteria one is specifically for development seeking a local tax exemption, and this project is seeking a local tax, tax exemption. Staff considers all of the criteria met, including the partnership with the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation, which serves central Texas and is already a partner with other multifamily developments in San Marcos. Next slide. Criteria two through six are met because the development is providing affordable housing units, and it's in a preferred area for this type of development on the zoning map and comprehensive plan. The development is also located near the services. Next slide. Finally, criteria eight deals with the services which will be provided on-site, and the applicant achieved one point higher than the minimum requirement by TDAHCA. These services will be memorialized in their agreement with the state, which is provided to the city at a later date. Since these agreements are a requirement of the state application, staff considers these criteria met. Next slide. The Affordable Housing Policy also provides additional criteria to help support or not support these types of developments. The development is not in a floodplain and fire service is available. The applicant estimated approximately seven million dollars in tax revenue will be lost due to this project's partnership with Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. No payment in lieu of taxes is proposed. Since this is a senior housing development, criteria three and four on this list apply. The applicant has been in contact with CAPCAG, the Capital Area Council of Governments, for the required presentations from the area agency on aging. Distance to medical services is criteria number four, and the property is within half a mile of an emergency room and a CVS pharmacy. Next slide. This slide lists the services which will be provided. The scoring matrix was provided in your packet, and the applicant is exceeding the minimum amenities score by one point. They're also providing the minimum required residential support services. I will note the list on the slide does not match the number if you count them up, because some of the options receive two and three points on the matrix. So that is the more detailed list that's provided in the packet. Next slide. We've seen this slide multiple times, which lists additional language provided in the resolution of no objection. First is the twice, the state average per capita language, which just acknowledges that the city of San Marcos has quite a few of these projects compared to our city population. And the second is the census tract analysis, and this development is also within a census tract, which has many households living in low-income housing tax credit developments. Next slide. This item was placed on an agenda for the Workforce Housing Committee. However, the committee was unable to meet, so this request does not include a recommendation from that committee. Staff's recommendation is based on the criteria in the Affordable Housing Policy, and since the development meets more than five of the eight criteria, staff recommends approval of the request as presented, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak far against or just about this item, please come forward. Go to the podium. We'll need your name and your address. Do we, we didn't have anybody sign up online? Okay. So I will close the public hearing with no speakers, and I will entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Questions by council.
Question, uh, Mayor, on the taxes, did you say that's going to stay locally, or?
They are partnering with, partnering with the Capital Area, oh my goodness, sorry, I have two on my agenda, Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation.
Which means?
Which is central Texas-based, yes.
It means that they're tax exempt. There, there will be no property taxes from this project, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And the criteria is that they partner with a local, local organization, so since this organization serves Hays County, San Marcos and central Texas, we considered that local.
And that's not anything we have control over, correct? Other than saying we don't want the project.
Right.
I don't want to go there.
Right.
There's no doubt in my, in my mind that we need something like that. Uh, okay, I just, uh.
Well, the trade-off, I'm hoping, is because they're not paying taxes, they're able to make these units available at the price and at the income level.
Sixty percent or something.
That's the theory, right? That's the theory.
That's the theory.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, yeah.
Yeah, go right ahead.
But, go ahead. So this, like other ones that we've seen before, they're not more, this whole ride CAPCAG cross blanket, allowance seems a little odd as opposed to somebody that's using our local partnerships, which put more into our community. Y'all don't see it that way, or?
Uh, hold on. It, the part about CAPCAG is simply that they have the area agency on aging, which will do presentations. You're talking about, it's the Capital Area Finance Housing Corporation that is, will be holding this, which is why they're not paying taxes.
Oh, that's who they're partnering with?
Yes.
Yes.
The one that, we know somebody.
I'm not a cap dog.
No, 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 you're, you're right. They're, they're not involved.
That's only for providing presentations because this is a senior housing development.
Gotcha, I gotcha.
It's an additional criteria that we've added recently.
The Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation has been involved in many of these for, since the nineties.
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
They've been around a long time. So we don't always talk about it, and they don't always hold the land. Some of these do pay taxes, some do not. I, I wish there was an in-between, uh, because we know that people, residents, are going to be using the library and parks and, uh, I, I hope not too often, police and fire service. So there is a cost to the city, but this is a type of project that for, um.
Senior citizens, wow.
Well, senior citizens, but also for, we're, we're, we're not a high-income community. So, council, are y'all, any other questions? Are you ready to vote? I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Venio.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero, one absent.
Okay, on to item eighteen.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one R, providing no objection to the submission of an application for a low-income housing tax credits to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the proposed Center Point Depot multifamily housing project located at the intersection of Commercial Loop and the Future Transportation Way, approving findings related to the application imposing conditions for such non-objection, authorizing the execution of an agreement of, for the payment of fees in lieu of property taxes and declare an effective date and consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one R.
Ms. Hernandez.
Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. The subject property is approximately seventeen acres. It's located south of Center Point Road and will have frontage on Transportation Way at the end of Commercial Loop. The applicant is proposing a low-income housing tax credit project or light seat development, which will be tax exempt. The applicant is proposing a payment in lieu of taxes, also called a pilot, in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand paid over fifteen years, or four hundred thousand paid as an upfront lump sum. And we'll be asking council to pick which of those options you prefer at the end of the presentation. Next slide. The site plan and unit mix are shown here. All units will serve those making sixty percent or less of the area meeting median income, AMI, and the units will be one, two and three-bedroom units. Next slide. The property is zone character District Five, and it's located in an employment center on the preferred scenario map. Next slide. The property is not in an environmentally sensitive area and will be accessed by new roads being constructed in the area in accordance with the city's transportation master plan. Next slide. The Affordable Housing Policy Criteria includes considering distance to services. The map shows the property is not located within half a mile of any of the recommended services, which include grocery, medical or schools. Next slide. The next few slides are detailing the criteria in the Affordable Housing Policy. Criteria number one is specifically for development seeking local tax exemptions. Staff considers all of these criteria met, including the partnership with the San Marcos Housing Authority. Next slide. Criteria two, four and five are considered met because the development is providing affordable housing units in a, in a preferred zoning district and will provide a shuttle for their residences because there is no transit service in the area. The development is not meeting the criteria for being in the appropriate area on the preferred scenario map or being located near required services, recommended services. Next slide. Criteria eight dealing with the services which will be provided. The applicant achieved thirty-four points, which well exceeds the eighteen-point minimum required by TDAHCA, and these services will be memorialized in their agreement with the state, provided to the city at a later date. Next slide. The Affordable Housing Policy also provides additional criteria to support or not support these types of developments. This particular development is not within the floodplain. Fire service is available. The applicant estimated approximately four million dollars in tax revenue will be lost due to the project's partnership with the housing authority. But again, they are proposing a payment in lieu of taxes, either five fifty over fifteen years or four hundred thousand upfront payment. Since this is not a senior housing development, since the Strategic Housing Action Plan is not approved, the remaining criteria do not apply. Next slide. This slide lists the services. As I mentioned, they are well exceeding those requirements of TDAHCA or the state requirements. Next slide. We saw this slide on the previous item. We have the twice state per capita language, which is required for anything that gets constructed in the city of San Marcos. This is within a census tract that has more than twenty percent housing tax credits per household. And there is an additional section in this resolution, which we call the one-mile, three-year rule. And that just means that you have approved other developments in the past three years within one mile of the subject property. Those two developments are Sanderow at Center Point, the purple that's kind of in the center, a little above this property, as well as eighteen hundred apartments, which you can see just to the right on the other side of I-35. Next slide. Again, this item was placed on an agenda for the Workforce Housing Committee. However, the committee was unable to meet, so this request does not include a recommendation from that committee. Staff's recommendation is based on the criteria in the Affordable Housing Policy, and since the development meets five of the eight criteria, staff recommends approval of the request as presented, and that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. I will open the public hearing on this item. Those wishing to speak, if you approach the podium, give your name and address, and the next three minutes will be yours to talk about the project. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, you may go ahead and line up.
Laura DuPont, I'm at ten twenty-four West San Antonio Street here in beautiful San Marcos. I'm part of the development team, Streamline Advisory Partners. Uh, we're excited to bring forth Center Point Depot. We feel like it's a great project. We hope you do, too, and we're also excited to partner with the San Marcos Housing Authority. We do feel that it's important to keep dollars local, and we see that as a way to do that, and so, um, anyway, this is my town, too, and, um, thank you for your consideration. And we're here if you have any questions, so just let us know.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak far against or about this project? Now would be the time. And we don't have anybody waiting online, do we? That's signed up, okay. And I will close the public hearing and.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And we'll give Mr. Scott the motion and, um, Mr. Mendoza the second. And council, uh, I'm going to be looking for an amendment. May we go back to the screen that talks about the pilot? Pilot being payment in lieu of taxes.
Would you like me to include that in the motion?
That should be the second slide of the presentation.
It's somewhere. Uh, the options are a one-time, four hundred thousand dollars, or, um, soon, a payment of two hundred and fifty thousand, and then over fifteen years, twenty thousand per year, which will total to five hundred and fifty thousand, and we need to make the decision as to which of their kind offers we want to accept.
I'll take.
Is there a staff recommendation?
We had this conversation actually just yesterday with our housing committee, and we started to talk about, um, when you do the payment over time, even though the total of five fifty is larger, the value of a dollar is going to go down over time. I did reach out to our finance director. He's been very busy with that presentation you received during work session, so I haven't heard back from him. But from our perspective, I really think that probably the lump sum upfront would have the most benefit to our budget immediately, and you wouldn't lose the value of that dollar as time goes on.
Correct.
Um, did you want to make an amendment to choose the four hundred one time?
Yes, I'd like to include that in the motion.
Okay.
And I'll still support the second on that.
Now, let, let's do that as an amendment, and I'll give you the credit for the amendment. And Mr. Mendoza the second, are there any other thoughts on the payment? Ms. Venio, let's vote on that first.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, anything else on this item? Again, we are not a high-income community. We need these, even though we have to say, recognize to somebody, yes, we, we know we have a lot of these, and I understand why they do that, but we need a number of these, so, um, and I think partnering with the housing authority will be a good thing, because I know y'all have a lot of programs for residents, et cetera, so.
Well, that was a key word for me when you were going to put the money back in San Marcos. It makes a great difference. And you're right, we discussed the same subject earlier today, and I think all of us were on the same page of getting into four hundred thousand now.
Okay, so we will vote on the motion as amended, which includes the four hundred thousand, uh, one-time payment sooner rather than later.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, council, it is seven twenty-nine, and we usually have a break at ninety minutes, so I'm going to suggest that we do that now and come back at seven forty, if you would, please. I call this meeting back to order, if I can get everyone paying attention, please. We are now back at seven forty. We are now back at seven forty-one, and we will go back to the items that we pulled from consent. Ms. Trevino, would you read item nine, please?
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-three R, authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire public easements associated with the Highway eighty merged projects, number six-six-one and number five-five-five, as depicted in the location map attached hereto and incorporated here and for all purposes, determining the public necessity for this acquisition to improve water, wastewater, recycled water, public utility use. Authorize city manager or her designee to take all steps necessary to acquire the needed interest in the property in compliance with all applicable laws. Authorize the city attorney or their designee to institute condemnation proceedings as necessary to acquire said property interest to the extent negotiations are unsuccessful and declare an effective date.
Most approve.
Okay, hold on a second. Can we get on the screen the exact motion that we need? I sent in one, and Mr. Gary sent in one. I guess we need a "I move" that in front of that?
Yes, you see the motion to read as follows.
Okay.
The move is...
And...
Just indicate a motion to approve as indicated on the screen.
Okay, Mr. Scott, are you good with that?
Yes.
It's got to be this exact wording, because it's eminent domain. No.
Okay.
That's why we have it on the screen.
Just as indicated on the screen.
Okay, because this board's a little big for me.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Scott, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gleason. I do want to call to your attention the last few words, which is, "To the extent negotiations are unsuccessful." So, would someone like to speak to this just in a sentence or two, please? The lighter the touch, the better it works. No, somebody in the back's trying to turn it on for you, I think.
I can, well, I'll talk, and if I got to repeat, I can repeat it. Okay. So, yeah, it's one of those, we've been negotiating with, we have three projects in motion right now. We reach out to owners, we try and extend. There's some circumstances that almost forced us to go to the domain because of title issues. There's some project, we just can't get owners to respond, and so we go through all our due diligence. We like to make this known to the residents when we take forward that final offer, hey, we've had this conversation, it's been known, but let's try and avoid taking into this stuff. And typically, we're successful in avoiding eminent domain in the majority of the projects we work on.
Okay. So, this is just to move the project along to get the authorization at this point?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
And I would even add to that, that even in the rare case where a proceeding, you know, a case is actually filed, sometimes settlement negotiations continue to the right, to the last moment before the hearing is about to begin. So, that's not uncommon at all to settle at the courthouse steps if we were to get to that point, and hopefully, we'll keep that to a minimum, though.
All right, thank you. And I assume that those comments would be good for items ten and eleven in general. Okay, thank you very much. If there's no one else, Ms. Trevino, we will vote on item nine.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza. The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item ten.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-four, authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire public utility easements associated with Linda Drive Improvements Project, as depicted in the location map attached hereto and incorporated here and for all purposes, determining the public necessity for this acquisition to advance and achieve the public use of Linda Drive between Sher-Pope Street and Bug Lane, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take all necessary to acquire the needed interest in the property in compliance with all applicable laws. Authorize the city attorney or their designee to institute condemnation proceedings as necessary to acquire said property interest to the extent negotiations are unsuccessful and declare an effective date.
Okay, again, there's the special wording that will be shown on the screen, I hope. Next.
Motion to approve what the verbiage presented.
That'll be, that'll be fine. A motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prather. Again, this is if we just, all negotiations are not successful. Questions, concerns? Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
On to item eleven.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five R, authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire drainage easements associated with River Ridge Drainage Improvements Project, as depicted in the location map attached hereto and incorporated here and for all purposes, determining the public necessity for this acquisition to improve the drainage in the area shown on the map. Authorize the city manager or her designee to take all steps necessary to acquire the needed interest in the property in compliance with all applicable laws. Authorize city attorney or their designee to institute condemnation proceedings as necessary to acquire said property interest to the extent negotiations are unsuccessful and declare an effective date.
Again, if we can get the next slide to show the wording, and this is the motion that I'm seeking.
Motion to approve what the verbiage has presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather, and questions on this one? Questions, thoughts? Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And the last item polled was item fifteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine R, approving an agreement for the provision of services in connection with the proposed owner-requested annexation, case number AN dash twenty-four dash zero-three, of approximately seven point five-five-three acres of land, including adjacent right-of-way in Caldwell County, generally located on the western side of FM nineteen eighty-four, approximately four thousand six hundred feet northeast of the intersection between State Highway eighty and FM nineteen eighty-four. Authorize the city manager or her designee to execute said agreement on behalf of the city, set in a date for a public hearing concerning the proposed annexation of said tract of land and declare an effective date.
Counsel, we, oh, sorry, Ms. Hernandez.
I was going to let you do it, but we've received a request from the applicant to postpone this item to the July second agenda.
So, I'm seeking a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone to July second.
All right, motion by Mr. Scott. Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Okay, Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And that takes us to item nineteen.
Okay, consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four on one reading, amending the city's twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget to adjust expenditure accounts in the general fund to account for emergency expenditures in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand arising in response to the storm on May nine, twenty twenty-four, which expenditures are eligible for reimbursement by FEMA, including procedural provisions declaring an emergency, providing that this ordinance shall be effective after one reading and provide an effective date.
Most approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott and seconded by Mr. Gleason. Are there any questions?
No, but I do have a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And this is for the public and press, if they're here to present this or pass this along, that we will be spending this money out of our general fund, but the county has requested a disaster declaration, but how that's based off of is damage. And the only way to really do that is to figure out and figure out those totals is to, for people to self-report if you did have damage. So, if anybody had damage to homes, cars, if they had expenses involved with cleanups, please, please report it, because it is going to help us potentially get reimbursed for some of this money, so.
Okay, so, let's, let's ask Ms. Reyes. We can ask people to report it, but we need to tell them how.
They can report it by contacting our Resource Recovery Department to let them know if there's debris and things that need to do. They're also coordinating with our emergency management folks to make sure that all those things get done. They can, the other way to report it, if you don't have debris or things like that, it's more your homes, then you can do it through our risk management office, through the HR department. So, those are the ways in which you can do it. And if there's confusion about anything, just call the city manager's office, and we can try to direct you to the right place.
I'll call, because I, I lost a tree, but friends were able to cut it up for me. I didn't need any city services, so do I still need to report that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then, do you want pictures?
It'd be good to have pictures.
Then where do we send the pictures?
Ms. Tamities is going to come up.
Come on up and, I mean, let's just explain to people what they need to do in really simple language.
If it's an individual property, they need to use iStat. That's going through TIDAM. Yeah, I know, and I wish emergency management was here unless Bridget wants to come up. It is a, an app to record all of your property issues. If you had anybody help you take trees down and put them to the curb, that is actually volunteer hours that we need to document, which helps us get to them, to the dollar amount we need to get, which is one point one million dollars for the reimbursement. So, every little thing does help. For the trees, we do need to have pictures. I know that Reis and Emergency Management is collecting all of that data and getting it put into all of our declaration that we're working on. But, yeah, there's, there's multiple things, so contacting emergency management for this specific apps to use, but again, volunteer hours, if anybody helped anybody, we, those count as well.
Can we get a link or something on our social media? Because I saw, we're going to pick it up, but I haven't seen, maybe it happened today. This is how you report with links and where to send pictures and things.
And I know Ms. Surly and her team have been getting those things out on iStat, and then we provided some also in council boxes, so that if y'all have people that want to do that, but we will definitely get on our social to make sure that that continues.
And our main webpage, let people know, because we're asking them to help us. We need to make it as easy as we can.
I agree.
To help them help us.
I agree, thank you.
Mayor, I want to give some kudos to the staff. As soon as they, this happened, they were up and going. Tamities, your team was great. I think y'all really showed people that what San Marcos is all about when disasters happen, and thank you very much.
And we're still picking up brush till when?
We don't have a cutoff date yet. We are working on our first pass with our debris contractor, removal contractors. We will have a better idea by the end of this week how we're going to be moving forward, but we need to get through this first week, so it's going to take about a week to get through the Willow Creek area and a week to get through Rio Vista.
And to be clear, that's the part of Willow Creek that's in the city of, in the city of San Marcos, because I got friends out there going, hey, and I'm going, and I know they're not in the city, so, yeah, no.
The part of Willow Creek inside city limits, it's going to take about a week to get through Rio Vista, and then about a week to get through Blanco Gardens and Wallace Edition, and then that should be by the end of this week, we'll have an idea. We have a meeting with the debris contractor and the monitoring contractor to see how we're going on everything.
Yeah, they did my house today, and they were just both out there, great job. They cleaned up, raked everything up, and thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
And we're not talking about, we're talking about just all the flooding and disasters from the past, even right now, just current stuff that's...
Oh, yes, yeah.
Because there's Baptist community groups, veteran groups, that helps other people do things. How do they report, or can they report as a group, or do they need to have individuals?
Yes, and actually, I'll let Bridget talk about how the volunteer reporting is going.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't hear the first time she called for me. So, when it comes to the reporting, are you talking about the volunteer hours themselves, how those groups?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Texas Baptist Men are Texas on a Mission right now, will be reporting back to us at the end of their time here, so right now, they're guaranteed to be here for at least another two weeks. They may extend that time if they can find another location to house them a little bit after that. At the very end of it, they will send us all the volunteer hours, and they will divide it up, because they have spent a decent amount of time in Guadalupe County as well, so we will get the hours that they've reported that they've spent in San Marcos and in Hayes County. And then any...
Oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I was going to say, and then anybody else, we also have, there's a reporting tool that Hayes County has put out, that individuals who've gone and helped their neighbors can also report that, so Hayes County is also gathering volunteer information there.
Okay, yeah, I guess one of the questions was, are the people that were helped the ones that need to report, or can the people that helped do the reporting?
So, in terms of reporting those individual volunteer hours, we would recommend it being the people who did the help themselves, being the ones to report that. If they're unable to report it themselves, then other people can assist them in reporting.
Our goal is to get a federal disaster declaration, and if so, these expenses can be reimbursed, is that...
They can be, some expenses can be reimbursed at a seventy-five, twenty-five percent rate, so the feds or the state would come in, reimburse up to seventy-five percent of some of the eligible costs, and then the city would be eligible to use some of those volunteer hours to help equal out that additional twenty-five percent. So, once we figure out exactly what the total is, we first have to hit a one point one million dollar county threshold in order to be eligible to add on to that declaration.
And Ms. Surly did let me know, all information can be found at samarcustx.gov/weather, and so that is, that's where everything is contained. It's info about brush drop-off, how to remove damages, or how to report damages. And then the other thing that I wanted to share with counsel is our plan is to do an after-action report to let you know kind of all the efforts that have gone on, you know, from when things began to, you know, where we are at that time. And so, that is scheduled for June fourth, and so that will be coming to you in your work session, and that's where we're planning on doing that. So, also want to echo Mr. Gonzalez. I know, again, we'll get into a lot more on June the fourth, and of course, nothing is ever perfect, you know? We always come into this, and I always, always tell our team, like, we're never perfect at everything, and as long as we don't take it that we're going to be perfect, it's always, we're always going to be open to learning and having lessons learned about things. But one thing that I, one thing that I will say is that it was amazing at how quickly our staff acted, getting the systems in place and the electric crews, you know, working through the night and having everybody restored, went from, what was it, twelve thousand outages, you know, to, to zero within like thirty hours, and they had most of them done within twenty-four. So, with Seguin and New Braunfels, and like I said, we'll get into a lot more, but there were a lot of really wonderful things that we're very proud of.
Yes, it was. Maybe we need to proclaim something. Okay. You're not, your microphone isn't on.
So, did you say there's like a million-dollar deductible kind of thing, or...
Not deductible, but before we can, so even though there's a disaster declared, in order to get the full declaration, we have to hit a one point one million dollar threshold. Every county, yes, so every county, based on their population, will get a different threshold, so that's what ours currently is. So, we're trying to gather all the damage that we can that would be eligible to hit that.
Right, more the merrier.
Exactly.
A special thanks also to Seguin. I saw several of their electrical trucks here in San Marcos helping out, and I think this is the second time I've seen that.
We have great inter-local relationships with City of Seguin, but then also New Braunfels Utilities was here. I believe City of Austin was here, so we have, we had several that came down and really, So we have, we had several that came down and really, really helped us get everybody back up. So very, very appreciative of everybody's efforts.
Hopefully we can repay them someday.
I was gonna ask, did we pay them?
We do pay them, yes.
And then the only other thing I'll throw a shout out to is, is all the citizens that helped out. You couldn't even navigate my neighborhood for several hours. I caught several groups of college boys walking down the street, clearing the street themselves out of their own initiative. And so that, those kind of things do add up and help out. And it was just good to see all my neighbors kind of coming together, figuring out who needed help, when, where, and what. And, and it was, it was good. So I'm just glad nobody got hurt.
And we will reiterate, there is still a long list of citizens who called us that need help. And so we are trying to hit as many as we can as fast as we can. Texas Baptist Men or Texas on a Mission is trying to hit as many that need chainsaw help or have trees still on their houses or their cars. And then after that, Mission Abels also offered to help. So if anybody does want to volunteer, I know over the next couple of weeks, they're gonna be looking for more community members who can come out and help because we still have a lot of families who have debris that they can't necessarily get to right away.
These type of storms, they're called derecos. Is that what the term is? Dereco?
Derecho or something. I think that means tide winds.
Long-term, long. No, it's a straight-line wind event.
A lot of straight-line winds.
Straight-line winds. But it, it hit us quick, but we had a quick recovery and our citizens are helping other citizens. So let's get these numbers in so hopefully we can get that federal declaration and bring some financial relief from the storm, this dereco.
All right.
I was outside when it hit and I like, I was looking for tornadoes.
Whenever we've got bad weather, I'm always on KXAN looking for Jim Spencer. And when they said, well, it's kind of near where, you know, the old New Ranch Road 12 meet. And I'm going, oh, yeah, thanks, fire station too. But yeah, I, I got in and hit like everybody else or like we should have, so. Anyway, I didn't watch it. I was too afraid to. Anyone else?
I'm gonna save anything else I've got to say for the after-action anyway, so.
Okay.
I'm done for now.
Then, we have something to vote on, Mr. Trevino, so we will vote.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
On to item 20.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-92R approving change order number three to the street overlay indefinite delivery indefinite quantity contract with Asphalt Inc., OCDPA, Lone Star paving for a street overlay services in the amount of $1,256,718.75, authorizes the city manager or her designate to execute the change order on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Questions?
No, hurry up.
Mr. Trevino will vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather. Motion passes six to zero.
Item 21.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-93R approving a chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive Agreement with BRE Group 500, Wonder World 2022 LP, also known as Project Snapdragon, providing for the rebate of real property taxes owned to the city for only the unoccupied portions, apologies, of a newly contracted spec buildings for the first three years after construction in amounts equivalent to 100% in one year. In year one, 75% in year two, and 50% in year three. Authorize city manager or her designate to execute said agreement on behalf of, and declare an effective date.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Any questions, concerns? Mr. Smith, anything you want to tell us before we vote?
Nothing that hasn't been mentioned already. It's a great project. We're excited to see it come together.
The packet was complete, so thank you very much, and we will look forward to that. Mr. Trevino, we will vote.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item 22.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-94R, 94R, approving a second five-year extension of the recycling services drop-off center and city facility contract with Green Guy Recycling, Inc. that provides for additional services, increases the annual contract amount by 0.5%, and aligns a contract term with the city's fiscal year, authorizes the city manager or her designate to execute said contract extension and provide an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions? I had, I had posted some on the message board. I'm not sure that my question on the dollars exactly was answered, but I'm okay to go ahead and work with this. Any thoughts from anybody else? Mr. Trevino will vote.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Motion passes six to zero.
On to item 23.
Consider appointments to fill vacancies on the boards and commission and provide direction to staff. A, our commission, B, Human Services Advisory Board.
Counsel, we've got two. We have the Arts Commission and the Human Services Advisory Board. The spreadsheet and the applications were sent to y'all last week sometime. So let's do Arts Commission first. And I will accept one or more nominations. Again, thank you to everyone who applies for our boards or commissions. This is, this means time out of your time, and we appreciate it. Mr. Mendoza? Oh, you're waiting, okay. All right.
Just so everybody knows, call me if you want to be on a board because it's easier.
Well, there were several, and several of them actually talked about arts, experience, things that, that they can bring to the table. I'm going to put the name of Nina Lou Stein in play.
Sounds good.
Okay.
By me.
Y'all good with, okay. So, Ms. Trevino, we will be a one-for-one vote.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza and Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Stein.
And next is the Human Services Advisory Board.
I was gonna suggest Ms. Karen Porter.
So was I.
Oh, all right.
Are there any other nominations? All right, this will be a one-for-one for Karen Porter for Human Services Advisory Board.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Item 24.
Consider appointing a third council member to the Animal Services City Council Committee and provide direction to staff.
Okay, counsel, we have a vacancy, and I'm looking to see who is interested. Currently with the vacancy, Mr. Scott and I are on the board.
I would love to please be on this board, so I, please, I'd like to not leave myself.
I'll second.
Thank you.
You don't need a second, but we appreciate your support. All right, so Mr. Mendoza has volunteered before, before voluntold. So let's vote on Mr. Mendoza.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, my colleagues.
Welcome aboard. And next, we have another appointment to make.
Consider appointing a third council member to the Workforce Housing City Council Committee and provide direction to staff.
And currently, I believe that's Mr. Scott and Mr. Gonzalez. We're looking for.
So I, I'd like to jump on this one as well, please.
Well, you did, you, you've been here a while, but we haven't had vacancies in a while, so.
Yes, I would love to be part of this as well, please.
All right. Are there any other volunteers? This is an important committee, so y'all can express that. We will vote. It'll be a one-for-one. Mr. Mendoza for the Workforce Housing City Council Committee.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye. Thank you, my colleagues.
All right, next, item 26.
Hold discussion regarding tiny homes, also known as tiny homes and micro homes, houses, sorry, and provide direction to the city manager.
Counsel, I'd put this on here. We have these in our code, and we did make a change, and I don't remember when it was, six months, a year ago, to allow them, Ms. Hernandez, correct me if I'm wrong. Prior to this, originally in the Land Development Code, when it was approved, they were limited to mobile home districts. Was that, am I correct on that? And then recent, more recently, we have said we will allow them in some single-family neighborhoods, and some are permitted by rights. Some places it's not allowed, and some places it's limited.
Right, so actually, our 2018 Development Code didn't have the term tiny home in it at all, so that was one of the first revisions we made in 2020. We, for tiny home, a standalone tiny home, we treat it like a single-family home. For tiny homes where they want to build what we might consider a tiny home village, where it's a single lot and there are multiple structures, those we treat like a mobile home.
Right.
Because they have different standards for providing access and things like that. But yes, they are permitted by right in some districts. In some districts, they are limited, which means occupancy restrictions apply. Really, that's occurring in the same districts where single-family occupancy restrictions apply. And then you're right, they are prohibited in certain zoning districts.
Correct. But counsel, what, oh, let me back up. What I'm looking for is we've got, there's, there's a number of vacant lots in San Marcos. And some neighborhoods where, in Victory Gardens, some of those lots are 25-foot originally. And so in places where we have, and we do have some small lots permissible now, I think down to 40, which we didn't have before. And this is going to be a viable option for people that want to live in a single-family home. Several people have talked to me lately saying, I, I could live in 600 square feet. And they're looking at a lower value, they're looking at lower property taxes, they're looking at lower electric bills because it's a smaller space to heat and cool. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we get it out. And of course, whatever building codes apply for affixing it to, you know, foundation or whatever it is, I'm, I'm not asking for any variances on any of that. I just want to make sure that people know that, you know, the tiny homes will be, will be welcome and can often be, because they're in some cases mass-produced, they can be cheaper even with the move-in cost. Yes, sir?
I have a question on that. The building requirements, like, I mean, I liked the idea of tiny homes, but I really like the idea that value staying there and built on foundations as opposed to just, okay, so is that?
I'm talking about, it's, it's gonna be like a stick-built house afterwards. It's not a mobile home that you've still got wheels and you're pulling it out. I'm looking at this as being a permanent installation.
Just want to make sure that's.
Thank you for bringing that up. Because yes, that is what I'm looking at.
Yes, it must meet the residential building code, including that it be fixed on a foundation. Again, we treat them like single-family homes. Some of the challenges, just for the community if they're listening, if the, the unit that you're looking at has wheels, we're going to treat it like an RV.
Sure.
So if you come and ask us to, you know, move into an RV on your property, we're probably going to get a, a no, or let's, let's see what we can do to modify this structure. But yes, they would have to meet the residential building code.
But aren't some of those tiny homes RVs because they're on wheels?
Yes.
Well, then it's an RV, and that's.
Right. They have to meet the building code, residential building code requirements for a residential structure that you're living in. RVs aren't necessarily intended to be lived in permanently. They're more of a temporary residence when you're.
There are, but there's some tiny homes that like, you know, that they look like a tiny home, but they're on wheels, and so they're technically an RV. Is that? I, I like that we're expanding the uses of these and providing more affordable options and allowing people more freedoms, that kind of stuff. So I like the direction we're going. But I am also curious about like, yeah, what if you wanted to move one of those that are a tiny home, but they're technically on wheels, so they're considered a?
So when you say look like, it's hard for me to give you a definitive answer on what that would be classified. We would have to look at it with our chief building official, our permit plan reviewers, and determine which category it falls into. But usually they're affixed on a permanent foundation, and that's what gives you that, you know, permanence to it, that someone's actually going to be living in it and that it won't just be a temporary structure that gets pulled away in six months.
I think the big thing here is that we just get word out that someone doesn't buy a lot, think they're gonna rule one of those on there, that, that this would have to be on a foundation of some sort and, and a permanent structure, as long as we're getting the word out.
Basically like you buy a house someplace else that is about to be demolished or perhaps, and you take that house and you move it onto a lot, which people have done over the years. And to me, it's the same thing. It's just a house that you're getting, hopefully, less expensive because of mass construction.
Right, and I will, I guess, again, for any public that's listening, interested in potentially purchasing or constructing a tiny home, call the Planning and Development Services office. Let us check your zoning. Show us what you're proposing to place on the property, and we can vet it to make sure that it would actually be allowed. We have pre-development meetings where you can talk to engineering if it happens to be near a floodplain and any requirements that might be associated with that. So Planning and Development Services will be your best resource if you're interested in this type of home in San Marcos, but they are allowed, and we're happy to work with people through that process.
And there's a permit required to move it in?
There would be a moving permit if they're moving the structure, stick-build, obviously, building permit. But we also have a permit determination form that we can help people figure out exactly what they'll need because you'll need plumbing and electrical and all of those other things that are associated with new construction or even moving structures.
Likely construction of a slab with all those things that you've talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to get the conversation going.
I do have a question here. So I, I love the tiny house. It's a great idea. My concern is seeing somebody purchase a lot, let's say it's a third of an acre in one of our established neighborhoods, and they want to put a 600-foot tiny home in there. I have a fear they're gonna go ahead and start requesting to split those properties and those, those third acres into two or three different properties.
They can do it now.
Okay.
They can request, as long as it meets our lot sizes and all the things in the code, they, they can request that now. It may or may not require a zoning change, depends?
Correct. Depending on the size of the lot, all of our zoning districts have a lot width minimum. Single-family, it's typically 50 feet, so most of those properties you're talking about will be 50 feet wide and probably not much more. So you can't split it by right with a subdivision. But you could request a zoning change, and I always like to point to our one change that we had on the corner of Bishop and Marlton. It was single-family. We changed it to a neighborhood district, and they built two homes on smaller lots. But zoning changes are looked at on a case-by-case basis, and it would depend on, you know, the surrounding area and all of the criteria in the development code that you would ultimately, as city council, be the final decision-makers whether or not that would be allowed.
When you mention tiny houses, and I bring this up because we've seen, I'll just go back to Austin where you have these parts on east side that they put thin, really thin houses that extend all the way back to the end of the property, and they split the, the areas up with the thought of affordable housing. But the way they design these houses seems that it's not affordable because the people that are living in there are kind of, you know, well-to-do. So I'm just wondering, I mean, are we talking about little houses that you can buy at lows that you see out there that are one-story? Or are we talking about building two-stories but very thin kind of structures?
Most tiny homes are a single-story with a loft. So you would have your sleeping area kind of on a half-story, and everything else is in the lower part of the structure. But what you're talking about, the tall, skinny, and deep, those are more like what I would consider a townhome. Once you start getting multiple stories and extending them back, depending if they're connected or not. But again, it goes back to the zoning district. So if your zoning district SF6, for example, most of our neighborhoods are, again, that 50-foot width is the minimum. You wouldn't be able to split it and do thinner, longer lots without a zoning change.
I'm okay with it as long as it provides some affordable housing for individuals.
Well, and, and we're talking, I'm talking about it's one house per lot. If you've got a large lot, that doesn't mean you're moving three or four of these in there because now you're kind of into mobile home manufactured housing territory. So, yeah, I'm talking about one per lot, simply, just, and less expensive way to get a home.
That's, if it's, if it's that simple, then yes, I think that's a great idea.
This is just for, for knowledge for some people. Years back, we asked, how many lots is there out there for mobile homes? And I think there was three left in San Marcos. This was years back. Not that this matters, I just want to, you know, tell us thinking of buying one and renting that lot out and all that kind of stuff. But there's not many left.
I don't, yeah, we, we would not be doing a traditional mobile home, wheels, tongue, that you can still pull. That wouldn't go into any lots in San Marcos anymore, correct?
Well, there's three lots. There's still zone M, I think. Oh, there was.
Zoned mobile home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, if it's already zoned for a mobile home, then that's an allowable use.
But with that, you wouldn't be bringing one of those structures into a lot that isn't zoned, that?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so.
I like the direction, how we, how we bring this back.
I think.
It's already in the code. People can do it.
It's in the code. We've already done what my original agenda item request was. Mr. Van Tally says, hey, we already did this, and I'm going, yay, now let's let people know we did it. And so it's really just to have a discussion, make sure we're all on the same page with, with wanting to do this. And, and we'll, we'll see what happens. But for the most part, if there's not a zoning change, if somebody's got a single-family zoning, they want to purchase a tiny home, talk to you guys first.
Yes.
Do what they need to do, and, and move in later.
And I, and I just want to state too, it's kind of interesting, we're having this discussion after what Austin did this week.
Yeah, this was on the agenda before that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, but as long as we're not talking about reducing the lot sizes on this, you know, that's my big thing, is I just don't want us to start down that path where we're at less than 2,000 square feet for lots like Austin did.
Did you see what their minimum was before?
Eighteen, yes.
Five, 5,700, 5,700, I think, was their minimum lot size before, so they...
Eighteen hundred.
I know.
Well, we have 5,000 lots, I mean, square feet.
6,000, 6,000 square feet for traditional, single-family. You can go down to a lower lot size, I think even as low as 1,200 square feet with a zoning change.
Right.
And that's your townhome-type development, like Mr. Mendoza was referencing, and...
Because I was writing those numbers down, then went and pulled our code to see where we were. Yeah.
Yes, but with a zoning change. So if there's an appropriate location for something like that, absolutely. But again, zoning is requested by property owners, so we will see if that comes about. But right now, absolutely, tiny homes, we treat them like single-family for the most part.
Wonderful. Thanking you so much.
Of course.
And there's, there's nothing to vote on here. This was just for a discussion, and it seems like we're all moving in the same direction. So thank y'all very much. And with that, we can move on to item 27.
The city council will convene in a executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the applicability of Section 86.003 of the City Code concerning consent to annexation for the provision of utilities outside the city limits to a proposed development that is southeast of the city.
And this item was also posted on our work session agenda for the 3 o'clock session. We held our executive session then, and we completed it, so there's no need to have an executive session at this time. On to item 28.
Consider action by motion and provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session item held during the work session and/or regular meeting, just as stated above.
And we had that session. We provided direction to staff. And we can move on to question and answer with the press and public. No one was signed up. Is there anyone in chambers who wishes to ask a question? If not, we will conclude that portion of our program, and we will move on to the portion of our program called adjournment. I will seek a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza to adjourn, and we will vote on that one.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
We are clocking out at 8:22.
And we, and we got things done, too.